Good evening, I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishpine.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morganstein.
Here.
Chortel.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
Chairman Savoni.
Here. Before we continue along the agenda, after a conversation with Counselor Morganstein, I'm going to read a brief statement. "Many of us are aware of the racially motivated activity which has occurred in our downtown over the past two weekends. The statement, 'It is okay to be white,' may not in and of itself appear to be racist in nature. However, when one learns that this is the product of a movement by white supremacists, it is easily construed to intimidate those who are not considered white. As the child of immigrants, I am sensitive to issues regarding race. While Italian immigrants have not in recent history been the subject of discrimination, there have been times throughout history, not so distant, when any race, ethnicity, or creed was the subject of division. We who are Wallingford do not support any discrimination based upon race, color, creed, or national origin. And I believe that all sitting with me on this town council agree with this statement." Thank you. Onto item three, which is the opioid litigation update. A question for the law department. Should we start this by going into executive session? The executive session was placed after the report. Okay. Item three, the opioid litigation update. Good evening, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please.
I will. Good evening, Councilman and Mayor, congratulations on your 19 years. Have you turned this on?
It's on.
It's on, okay. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to, both to represent you in the opioid litigation, which I think is one of the most important, if not the most important litigation in the country at this time, and also to be here and give a summary and answer your questions. Would you like to start with questions, or would you prefer that I start with a summary, Mr. Chairman?
So, remind us who you are for the record.
I'm sorry, I did not say my name, did I? I'm Judy Skolnick, and I'm a partner at Scott &amp; Scott. It's a Connecticut-based law firm, and we're representing you in the opioid litigation against the manufacturers and the distributors of opioid products.
Is there any summary update you have before we go to questions?
I could give you a very brief summary of the landscape now. We... The town of Wallingford filed a complaint in April of 2018 in Superior Court, and along with four other communities, New London, New Haven, and New Britain. And it... There was... Another firm represented another group of plaintiffs. That was Waterbury and Bridgeport. Cases were consolidated before Judge Mukashir in Hartford, and after several hearings, he dismissed the complaint, which was erroneous on many points. But we took an appeal to the appellate division. The Supreme Court intervened and said, "This is such an important case, more akin to the Newtown shooting case. Why stop?" It's going to go up on appeal after the appellate division, whoever wins or whoever loses. So it's now before the Supreme Court. We've been, unfortunately, in that case, stayed, and that's our present position. We have to open it up. It was stayed because, as you probably all know from the press, Purdue Pharma, who's the first name defendant in our case and in almost all the 3,000 cases in the country, filed for bankruptcy protection on September 15th, which results in an automatic stay of all the litigation across the country. So we have to get that lifted, and so that we could pursue the appeal. I know I'm the lawyer, and you have to be careful of advice from lawyers of, you know, predictions, but Judge Mukashir's ruling was an outlier. No other case in state court dismissed the case in its entirety on the grounds that you don't have standing. The city has no standing to pursue damages. That was the grounds, except for North Dakota. So we, the state of Connecticut, stands alone with North Dakota in not allowing these cases to proceed. So we are fairly confident that the bulk of the authority and precedent is against him, much more so even than when he ruled. So there have been many cases since sustaining very similar complaints in other cases, in other state courts. So we think that we will prevail. That's one forum, state court. Then, many plaintiffs, who are mostly governmental entities, filed in the federal court, and all those cases, 2,500 of them, were moved to one court under a procedure they called the multi-district litigation procedure, and they're before Judge Polster in Cleveland. So he's overseeing all these cases. And he is beginning to pull his hair out. He is a settling judge. As he said the very first day that the cases were assigned to him in January of 2018, "I'm not the smartest judge on the bench. They just gave me these cases because I know how to settle cases, and this one is a bear." So, for about a year, he spent interviewing experts and trying to get a settlement going. And finally, he did what probably should have been done earlier. He scheduled a trial, because that's when people really get serious about settling. That trial was supposed to go forward in October 21st. Unfortunately, defendants threw money at that one case for $300 million. They settled the first case, so there was no trial. And there's still... So there was, it was sort of a wasted opportunity, because there was no data, no one knows what the jury would really do. All they know is that the defendants did not want the jury to get the case. So now, there's a new procedure that you, people have probably seen, and that is called the negotiation class, that Judge Polster came up with, that he will form a class action of all the cases in front of him and all these governmental entities in every state court. So it's a negotiation class where the members, and you, the city, the town of Wallingford is now a member, is more than 400, 4,000 members, which is a pretty big class. And it's also, for the purpose, the purpose of this class, which he said, "You can't get anywhere settling with the defendants, because they keep picking off the one trial or the nearest trial. And they say, 'We're not going to give you our best figure, because we'll still be liable in the next case.'" So his idea was get everybody in one class and say, "We will give you a release, what you want, the promised land, a global release, but you give us your highest figure, and let's get the money to the communities." That's the idea, and you have now until November 22nd to opt in or opt out of the class, which we will discuss that in executive session. But it's, it was born of Judge Polster's frustration on the case being too big to manage and not being able to settle it. So it's a, it's a new idea to enter into a class where there is, for settlement purposes, when you have no idea what the settlement offer is. It's just a procedure for settlement. That's where we are in the MDL. There's a third front, Purdue. The first, and many people think the worst manufacturer, the one who really set this whole crisis going with their sales of OxyContin, filed for bankruptcy. And as you probably all know too from recent coverage, is Purdue is 100% owned by one family, the Sackler family. Purdue is essentially, has very few assets left. They, they still sell OxyContin, and they, they said that they have a value of about $1.5 billion, but when you look at the trajectory, the sales are going straight down. So they, what, what they've offered as a settlement is that, even though the Sacklers are not in bankruptcy, they didn't file, just their company did, the Sacklers will, out of the goodness of their hearts, give $3 billion toward the settlement to be divided amongst all the plaintiffs in the country. And that's, was opposed by some people, there's, there's been all sorts of views on it. We took the view that that is maybe a great offer, but we have no idea what their assets are. So we want them to give us a financial statement and to put it under oath, so that if they're making things up, they could, they could, they could fear perjury. And they, and, and Attorney General Tong took the same position, that it's, you can't throw money at someone and say, "Take this," and it's not for nothing, as they say, "Just we will volunteer that." They would demand, of course, that we release, that there be a release of all their claims. So that's working its way through bankruptcy court with different hearings every couple of weeks. Purdue is still continuing in business, but it's under, it's under the trustee in bankruptcy. That's the third area, the third forum. So you have the state fight, you have the MDL group, you have Purdue bankruptcy, and the fourth and the last is that almost every state Attorney General has filed a lawsuit by now, including, of course, yours. Attorney General Tong sued Purdue and the Sacklers. Certain AGs filed against manufacturers as well, others filed against distributors. And they are, they're a mixed blessing as far as I'm concerned, because they, and I include Tong in this group, take a somewhat paternalistic attitude. "We are the state, and we have standing to protect all the people in the state, under parents, patriarchy, and we're really the most proper party, and it's not any of the cities. So let us pursue our case, and we will take care of you." And that's, and, and they did not sue many, many defendants that, that you have, but what they say is that they've used their subpoena power in the past few years to subpoena documents, so they are, they are in a position to settle cases with defendants who they haven't sued. And there's, and that, those negotiations are going on. We are party, we're, we're, we're trying to push our way into the door in those negotiations. We're trying to meet with your Attorney General to say, "There has to be, let's work out an allocation plan if you are successful in getting the money. We don't want you to take it to the state the way they did in tobacco." That's the reason that so many cities have filed in the opioids, because the, the case that's most like it is the one in the 1990s against the tobacco manufacturers, where every state, I think 46 states sued, and they all said, "The money will trickle down to all, to the subdivisions, and you'll be all taken care of. You'll be able to address this problem in your communities." None of it trickled down. It went to general, to the general budget and covered things like, you know, new roads, so, which is laudable, but not for funds that are directed for something else. So that's why so many cities and towns have jumped into this litigation. And to hear the same, "Don't worry, we've got you," is not very comforting. So we're watching the state, we're talking to them, we've had several meetings with them. It's all very cordial, but there is definitely an antagonism between the state's interest and the city's interest. And that's pretty, those are the four forums. What we're doing is, at the same time, we're just preparing for a Supreme Court argument, and we're going forward with the cases as, as, as best we can, watching all these different, different forces. It's like any big case, where sometimes the internecine fights amongst the plaintiffs are just as vigorous as the fights between the plaintiffs and the defendants. So that's pretty, that's a snapshot of late 2019, the opioid litigation. There have been no settlements across the board. The only people who've gotten money have been the entities that have actually had a trial, which is what the defendants are doing, they're picking them off. So there's no settlement to propose to you, there's no dollar amount. The Purdue one was an offer that's tremendous dispute. And that's, that's pretty much where we are. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The, the class that's being offered funds from the Sackler family, how big is, how many players are in that group?
The negotiation class?
The $3 billion being offered by the Sackler family?
Oh, how many people? Well, we don't know yet, because that, that's different than the class. That's in, in bankruptcy court. And the, they call it, the bankruptcy lawyers call it the bar date. The date by which you have to file the proof of claim has not come, it's not even been set yet. So until you get all the people in cities, and Indian tribes, and individual plaintiffs, and hospitals, and third-party payers, and children born with neonatal syndrome, I think those are all the categories of plaintiffs. Until they all file their proof of claims, you really don't know how big the class is. But you can guess, because there are already between 3,500 and 4,000 entities, political subdivisions such as yourself who filed. There's 49 state AGs who filed. I'm not quite, there, there's over 500 hospitals that filed. I'm not quite sure of the Indian tribes and the neonatal, neonatal babies are forming different classes. There's about five classes. There will be thousands and thousands, probably upwards of 10,000 claimants would be filing proof of claim for that $3 billion. So it, by the time it is divided, it's, could be very insignificant.
That's what it's beginning to sound like.
I, I'm afraid that that's what it is. And I am sure, as I am sitting here, that there, it's an opening offer. It's, it's in the opening one. And any state, 16 states supported it, which just boggles my mind. Why support an offer that's not supported by financial statements, and that's the first offer? Why? But it's not going to come off the table, I don't think. It's, it's only, they're anxious to settle. It's only going to go up. Or maybe they'll say, "That's really it, we're not moving." But it's certainly not going to go away by pushing, because that was the big fear about, by the, those who supported it. Don't push them, $3 billion is $3 billion. They're, they wouldn't have offered it if they're not willing to go higher.
Thank you. Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the update. You answered a lot of my questions, I was trying to understand what were being asked, or would be asked in executive session. I guess, you answered this, I'll ask it again. So we have no clue how much money potentially could trickle down to Wallingford eventually, if any of this does get settled?
Well, you sort of do, yeah. You have no idea if, for the, for the, in the bankruptcy. And you have no idea if there is a settlement with the distributors, which is where the state is really busy talking to the three big distributors. And you have no idea what the apportionment will be there. But you, for the negotiating class, there is an idea. What, what was done, this novel idea, is that you are a member of the class until you opt out, and there's no settlement before you, and the settlement is totally voluntary for any defendant of the 13 big families. They call it the, the big defendants, all have many subsidiaries, but there are 13 families, corporate families, that are sued in almost every case. They have the choice of using this procedure or not. You have no idea who's going to use it, if any, and you have no idea what they're going to offer. Those are the unknowns. But the knowns, they had to give you some knowns, so that you, you know where you stand in this class. And the known is that if there's a hypothetical $1 billion settlement, entirely hypothetical, then there was a map drawn of the United States and an analysis of where the opioids flowed based on death figures and the MME, the figures of how many drugs were in the communities. And so there was an amount set for every single city or town and county that would flow to you under this hypothetical $1 billion. And the amount for the town of Wallingford is $155,352 for every $1 billion of settlement. So you do know that, but you don't know if there is a settlement.
Thank, oh, thank you for that. Mayor, do we know, I mean, from your perspective, how would we, I'm just curious, maybe this is off agenda. How would, what would we do with that money? Do you have a program? And I, let me preface the question, why I'm asking the question. One of the things, one of the, the judge, I have a quote here, he, he cited the tobacco lawsuits as well, but his take on it was that when the states took on the tobacco companies and negotiated payments for healthcare, he pointed out, "Most of their legislatures ended up diverting the money to plug holes in budgets." So if the intention of this is to rectify a societal problem, I'm just curious, from a local perspective, what would we do with that, you know, extra money?
Well, I think we should honor the reason that we're receiving it, and that is to address the societal problems that arise out of the opioid abuse. I don't think we should be using it for other things.
No, I agree, but do you have any other specific, and if you don't, if you don't know now, it's fine. I'm just curious, are there specific programs, what initiatives we're not funding today that we would fund?
I don't have that list. I'd turn to our health department and youth service department and look at what, what programs and services are out there and what they need, and then we make judgments.
Okay, thank you. And then, when this came before us, I think it was December, almost two years ago, for the bid waiver, it was represented, to use Craig's favorite word, represented to us that this was all on contingency, there was no cost to the town, and that's still, that's still the case?
That's completely the case, yes.
And there's no, I mean, even in terms of just any kind of, the legal department isn't putting a lot of, I mean, this is all on your law firm in terms of?
Right, there's, there's no, there's, there's no fees, and there's no expenses. That's all on our law firm, it's, it's totally contingent. There will be, if one day, one day we get a trial, but that's down the line, because we have to get the Supreme Court to overturn Mukashir's decision and then bring it back to the court, to the trial court and try it. So we're looking at several years down the line. There will be some time involved of taking, because they will be entitled to take discovery against you, but that will be all that there will be. There'll be no expenses, and we'll be with you every step of the way, preparing for deposition and taking the deposition and trying our best to keep discovery not onerous.
So the time would be us really quantifying, this is, you know, our police force has had to deal with X number of issues, and we've had, you know, like really drilling down to a true cost?
Right, that, that's, that would be...
Beyond the human cost?
It would really be two aspects, because we've seen two trials now. We've seen the, we've seen a trial in Oklahoma that went to trial, that was a state court case. It was the first of the nation. And then, we actually did not see the MDL trial, because they settled right before, but I've looked at all the papers, I've worked with the lawyers who were trying that case, so I got prepared for that case. And we know what to do very well. There's actually two aspects, is what you lost, what the expenses, what the work, what, what... The police is one big area, schools are often another area, social services. It extends to every, to so many places in most towns. The library, and sometimes have to learn how to use Narcan, the cost of Narcan, the ambulance, CMT, it's on and on. So there's a historical cost. But then even more, a greater number is the abatement cost, what it would cost to abate the nuisance, this mess, this nightmare that they left in your community at their tremendous expense. For that, we mostly have experts who could project what you will need to, to, to put the communities... You'll never be back, of course, you'll never get the people back that are lost and, and all the pain and suffering. There's no compensation for that. But what you would need as a community to do going forward, to, to, we keep calling it abate the crisis as best as possible, and those are where the big costs are. And we, and they're very good experts who have been, it, who have been... What's useful for the MDL, because sometimes I take sort of a jaundiced view of them, "Why did he waste so much time trying to sell this case? Why didn't he schedule 10 trials at the same time?" You know, there's, everybody could quarterback. But one thing that this MDL judge did is he very carefully got, reviewed every motion to disqualify experts, and every single one of the plaintiff's experts that our group put forward, he, he said those, those were reliable, scientifically reliable, so they should be able to testify. And the numbers are just astounding, because it's a relapsing disease. You know, it's just, could go, could go forward for 20 years, is what some, most of our experts say. It's a generation that will be, you'll have to do recovery measures.
Okay, thank you. And the last question, and then maybe this is, there's a lot here, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just trying to sort this all out.
Good start.
No comment. Do we have the ability as a community? You know, you said 16 states were happy with, in one of the forums, 16 states were okay with the $3 billion offer, and obviously you're not, and that's fine, but is there a point where if we felt like our AG was being too aggressive? Do we have the ability to separate from that as a community, or we're kind of tied to what Connecticut does?
That's a great question, that's a really, that's a great question. He would say, if, if, if Mr. Tong was answering this question, he would say, "You are tied to what I'm doing, because I'm doing it on your behalf, and you don't even have standing to bring a lawsuit." So, yes, you are saddled right in the, right in there with me. But I think the right answer is that you do have an independent cause of action. Yes, the state suffered tremendous losses too, but you've suffered your own. And if you feel that what he is doing in the lawsuit is too aggressive, not aggressive enough, whatever it is, you should have, be able to pursue your own lawsuit. We have to get the Supreme Court to reverse, to endorse that view, but that's my view. But there is a political aspect to this, of course. It's, he's up for, you know, he's, he's a political figure. So that's why we've been trying to meet with them and keep open dialogue, so that we could at least get our point of view across. And, and I know I'm taking an awful lot of time, but there's just one more thing I want to tell you, because I think I, it, it's important, and it's positive, and I neglected to say it. The way that the, and, because it's a very fluid situation, so all the settlements talks are going on at the same time, and people are jockeying around for different positions. But one position that's sort of stayed the same for about six months now are the Attorney Generals are saying that when we settle and we get all the money for you, what we're going to do with it, we're not going to do what we did in tobacco, we're going to keep 15% for ourselves, and maybe we'll give 15% to the cities. There's a big question whether they'll give it just to those who sued or to all the cities. That, that 15% is questionable. But this 70%, the bulk of it, we are going to put in an abatement fund just to treat the opioid epidemic. How we spend the money will be up to us, but of course you will benefit from it. And that's where I think lobbying is very, very important, because the abatement fund is going to probably see the most money, because 70% of the settlement is the largest amount. And, and I think that it's very important that the local communities that really know where the problem is have a seat at the table on where that money goes. And that's what I've been trying to get across to the AG. And I think it's something that is, and, and your mayor has been very helpful on, on, on that effort as well. We tried to lobby the State House last year to get a statutory reversal of Mukashir's decision, and there's a group of state litigating cities who are trying, who, who, I think we're going to get more forceful in the, as the settlement negotiations get closer, and say, "We have to be on that committee, we have to see where that money goes." We're not going to say, "We're going to take it all to us." Of course, we'll give it fairly, but you know where the need is, more than any, anybody in Hartford.
I do have one more question, sorry, because the last, the last thing you said, "No, I'm confused." The 15%, is that off of the $155,250?
No.
That's a separate, that's a...
That's a separate paradigm, they have all these settlement paradigms.
Got it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishpine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to go back to the, the case that you brought. And I did read the complaint many months ago. It was my understanding that the basis of that case is because we have health insurance, we're self-insured, that as a result of the crisis and the addiction, that premiums are increased, they're impacted in, in that way?
That's a big, that, that was one big section, certainly gives us the right under the Connecticut Consumer Protection Law. But there's other parts too, that you're a municipality, you're a town, a town, and you have to make, one of your obligations is to make sure there's no nuisances in your town like this, like what the, what the chairman referred to, those signs that are being posted now. That could be construed as a nuisance, and that's your job to monitor it and to eradicate it. Opioids in the community that are dangerous products is a nuisance. That's almost the definition of a nuisance. We usually think of it as polluted... definition of a nuisance, we usually think of it as polluted water or polluted air, but this is like polluted brains and a dangerous substance that's controlled by the federal government that looks just like heroin under a microscope and operates just like heroin in people's minds, is a nuisance, so that's what I think is our actually most important claim, is that they have created a nuisance in the community and you're suing them to eradicate it and to give you funds to abate it.
So, and when we talked about this litigation originally, I had a lot of, and I think I was the only person to vote it against it because of the causation issues, which, you know, I know Judge Mukashia and, you know, I, I think that's basically what he said ultimately when he dismissed, it was very difficult for one to prove the causal link, you know, because you have a doctor prescribing, and, you know, how do you hold the manufacturer of a product liable when perhaps the doctor's prescribing more than they should have and therefore the person became addicted, and they become addicted because of that or because they are subsequent to being addicted, how does one prove that? And ultimately, I think that's what the judge said.
That's exactly what Judge Mukashia said, that, and it is a different, causation is not a straight line, it's not a car accident where one person hits another and you know that, what the cause is, but what every other judge except for North Dakota that cited Mukashia's opinion said, is you can prove it by aggregate, by numbers, by statistics, you're not going to have everybody, person in the city, in the town of Wallingford who is addicted, come up and testify and say, well, this is how I got there. That won't be, that, that's not necessary, you can show what the rates of addiction were before by looking at such factors as hospitalizations, overdose rates, death rates, and, and that data is getting better and better, what it was before the 2006 push for opioids and what it was after, and one great source of causation that we were beginning to argue to him, but since it was such an early case, we hadn't seen it as clearly yet, is all the manufacturers gave us their causation. What they did, every single one of them, is they hired a pretty robust sales force that went out in the community and went to doctors with their salespeople and sometimes samples and pushed it, pushed their product, which is fine, that's what pharmaceutical reps do, but they measured what each visit got, how much more prescriptions did they give, and they were tracking what the money was that they got for each visit, they were proving how the opioids were going, the prescribing was going up based on what they were doing, and then you see that what they were doing was making misrepresentations to these doctors, that does an awful lot for causation, and it's from their own contemporaneous business records. So, and that's what the courts that have said this can go forward looked at, that there is, it doesn't have, it could be aggregate, not individual stories, and the defendants themselves have provided proof, and then of course you layer on top the plaintiff's experts who, who can look at statistics and divine back what the cause was. So I think causation will not, I don't, that's why I'm so confident of prevailing.
But isn't, isn't it at a level a shield that the F D A, it isn't heroin, you know, it's, it's not a class two or anything, it's not, you know, it's-
Well, it's class, it's class two, but it's not heroin.
Yeah, but, you know, heroin being illegal.
Right.
F D A tested, you know, did all of these tests and authorized the product to go into the, into the marketplace, so-
They raised that, they raised that too, that they, that even Mukashia didn't seem to buy that, preemption, they said the federal government is supposed to oversee safety of products, they oversaw this and they approved it, so there's no complaint. It's, it fails because the federal government said opioids are permissible product, and they are, they're wonderful for end of life, when my mom took opiates until she, the last month of her life, and thank God she did, she was, that's proper, we didn't have to worry about her addiction. It's also proper after surgery where it's, you're in intense pain, you take it for two days, there's nothing proper about giving it to kids with, who got root canal to recover and take it for five, 10, 15 days, that is not proper, and the answer is that yes, the F D A approved it for proper use, that does not excuse you from lying about improper use. And that argument is, has prevailed, that's pretty solid, that they're not even making the preemption argument anymore, not with, not, not, you know, not, they're throwing it in, but they're not really resting on it.
So, I thought that the Attorney General had brought an action.
He did, against, but it's a limited one, he sued, I believe, unless there's been an amendment since then, he sued Purdue and then he sued the Sackler family, but there's, there are many manufacturers that-
Sure, but why wouldn't it be to the benefit of all for you or us to become part of that case and, you know, claim they were reasonable, necessary party for full adjudication of, of the claims, and then we have a seat at the table? Why not get together with them and then, you know, the settlement agreement, the tobacco litigation, there were no strings really attached to that money?
Right.
But certainly if we have a seat at the table on this more global situation, which represents everyone, not just those municipalities that are self-insured and that kind of stuff, then the settlement agreement can say, you know, this money shall be used for X.
Well, that's one of the, not quite as, as articulate as you put it, but one of the, the conversations that I've been having with the Attorney General's office is we have our lawsuit and you have yours, we're both on the same side of the V, of the versus, let's, we could keep separate lawsuits, but let's coordinate, because you're asking for state damages, we're asking for damages from a different pocket, but let's work the cases together. They do not want to hear that.
But if they've brought an action, we can force ourselves into that action, or at least ask the court to allow us to become part of that action without their assent?
We could ask the court to allow us to become part of that action, I'm not sure-
And then we're riding on their back?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the court would do, and we'd probably have to dismiss our action first, because they'd say that you'd have two going.
No, you would, you would agree that if they allowed us to become part of, we would be willing to do that, but you're not going to get rid of your case not knowing what the court's going to do, right?
Right, right.
It would just, and then, and then, you know, the, the less work that your office is having to do, less costs that are going to be deducted, that kind of stuff, it just seems like a good plan.
We could, but they, I don't think that the Attorney General has an interest in suing anybody else, and we do.
But once that case, you're waiting for a case to go to the jury, to get a number, so you can say to everybody else, look at, this is what these people did, settle all these other cases, so it doesn't matter who gets sued initially, because they're basically all doing the same thing, the, the bad actors. So, once you have that jury verdict that you can throw in front of everyone else, I mean, for the most part, the cards are going to fall.
That's, that's, that's cer, that's certainly true, but there's, 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 there's one of the little twists, there's three groups of defendants, there's the manufacturers, Purdue is the lead, and that's who, who A G Tong sued, and then there's the distributors, and there's a slightly different theory, they're the, what they call themselves are the pizza truck drivers, they just drove around delivering the drugs, they had no responsibility, meanwhile, they do, they were delivering them to obvious pill mill places and they were breaking a different law. And then the third group that's, is not even in your complaint yet because it wasn't considered at that time, that's more mature complaints now, and that's the pharmacies, and that one always takes a lot of debate too, what, whether there's, because there's often a resistance to suing pharmacies by city council, but I, I don't think Tong wants to sue anyone other than Purdue, but it's, your questions are very worth thinking about, and it's not dissimilar from what I'm trying to, the same conversation I'm trying to get from them.
I just had a couple more, you mentioned that we have until November 22nd, which is like next week, to make a decision, when did the prospect of this decision come to your attention?
Oh, it was pretty, I should be able to give you the exact date, the judge approved the class certification sometime in September, and I've been keeping people abreast of-
Well, this is the first that I've heard about it, so, and unfortunately, that's the way things happen, but-
Yeah, it's, it's, well, I should tell you that you have the best counsel that, that I've been dealing with, because we talked to the group of Connecticut clients together generally, and whenever I hear, this is Janice, you're going to get the smartest question, she's right on top of it, and so, congratulations on that choice, but yeah, it's not, it's not been that long, it was surprising to many people that he gave, that, that there was this, it was like about six weeks, which is really the minimum you could give, and people thought, you know, this is right after elections, it's just so many of the, every one of the classes, a government entity, why not wait till January?
And then you had mentioned three different classes of costs, damages, historical costs, abatement costs and pain and suffering, have those been recognized in any similar suits?
Well, they've, yes, in the case that was going to be tried before the M D L, the defendants made a motion for summary judgment, that these should all be, that this is all nonsense, and that was denied, so the Judge Polster in Cleveland said there are damages and there are abatement, pain and suffering is not allowed, that, that's not allowed, that's personal.
Yeah, I would think, yeah, exactly.
That's not allowed.
It would be difficult for our town to, although there is pain and suffering as a society, you know, actual loss of a loved one, a neighbor is not compensable in this case.
Right, it's, I mean, I always tell people that, that the damages cannot compensate no matter what, the damages and the abatement cannot, because there's a big chunk of it that is not compensable, and that's the people that we've lost and the people that have been damaged possibly for life, and that you just can't get back.
And then the, the last little thing, if we're awarded, let's say, $2 million, but it costs you 2.5 million to try the case, we end up not getting a bill, but we don't get anything, our, our award is whatever the court determines we would get, minus whatever it costs you to, to get that money.
Right, but what we're doing, we, we won't let, that, that can't happen, I mean, I guess theoretically it could, but we're, so far it's, we have not given any, we probably should actually give an accounting of our expenses, but it was for the most part legal work, which is not, there's no expenses, it was preparing for the oral argument, it was, you know, writing the complaint, it was getting ready for, like the biggest expenses so far are paper.
So far.
So far.
But if you had a trial in this case-
If we had a trial-
You're going to have some very hefty and numerous experts.
Yes, if a trial, I, I'll tell you this figure that I don't necessarily believe, but it made, shocked me, the M D L lawyers said to prepare for their one trial, don't fall off your seats, that got settled anyway, costs $60 million. Now that, I think that's inflated, but what we, the, the way we keep it down, I mean, that would make no sense for anybody, that would be ridiculous. We know the good, the, the M D L spent a lot of money, and I don't begrudge them, and they were the first ones to try to put the case together, but they went down a lot of rabbit holes that were very expensive rabbit holes with experts that they ended up not using, experts that were disqualified, it's not scientifically valid. We could try the case with about three experts and we could rely mostly on community people who could tell the story better than anybody else, and you wouldn't be trying it alone, it would be all the, all the cities of Wallingford, so it would be, I'm sorry, all the cities of Connecticut, it would be state by state, so it would be pooled, and the experts that we're using, we were already using them, and they do from time to time send us bills, but most of them are true believers and they are lower than you would expect, and we would, we would disperse those bills amongst all of our clients, not just Connecticut, because you're really basically doing the work. We haven't done that for you because the case got dismissed, so there's, you know, there's, that's, that's why we haven't, not sent you a bill, but we should send an accounting so you know where you are, and then also because we would send an accounting so you know where you are, when we got more, you know, more into the expense area, you could say, stop, you know, this is ridiculous, stop, let's settle now, you know, it's, it's your case, it's not ours, we're just, we wouldn't fund it to get you no money, and that, my, my boss, even though I'm a partner, it's a, there's a founder of the firm, Melvin Scott and David Scott, Melvin Scott is a 92-year-old, one of the oldest practicing lawyers in Connecticut, and he loves this case, and he says, go to town, he also knows how to keep his books and balance, he would say, Judy, what are you doing, you know, you can't, he would not approve, he would not approve within my firm, an outrageous expense, so it would be this checks and balances.
On the other hand, I don't think we had to spend any money for the tobacco litigation, and we have gotten money from it, so, I just-
Right.
You know, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening.
Hello.
I'm still a little, I'm not sure what we can ask, what we can't, we're going to go into executive session, this is, this is odd, I don't recall a situation where we've had this type of discussion, and then we're going into executive session for, I don't know what, but, but this is good, because it seems like a lot of the questions, a lot of the discussion would seem to me, be happening in executive session, and it's not, it's in public and that's good for the public.
I think so.
I'm not sure where we're going when we go into executive session, but I'm sure I'll find out. First of all, I mean, this, this is the kind of, this is the kind of, this, the case, it's not one that anyone would be against, I, I, almost, I almost feel like by questioning what's going on, in any way, shape or form, you, 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 you open yourself up to people thinking you're in favor of opioid abuse, you know, how do you, how do you not support this?
Right.
But I'm trying to look at the practicalities of where are we going?
Right.
What's going to happen? What are we trying to accomplish? I hear, I, I don't remember the wording, but something along the lines of changing behavior on the part of the manufacturer, and then mitigation, for lack of a better explanation, damages.
Right.
My point blank, is, is, and is one objection objective of this to put them out of business?
No.
Because I would have a big, I have an issue with that.
No, it's, it's certainly not an objective of our litigation, of the town of Wallingford. There are some state A Gs, Massachusetts in particular, who thinks that the Sacklers should be in jail, Mara Healy, the Attorney General, has publicly said this, they should be in jail and opium, and, and certainly OxyContin should be banned and Purdue should be out of business. That's pretty extreme, most of the litigants, and even at the state A G level think that there should be some punishment for misrepresentation, but, and there, and the role for opiates should be rolled back to what it was pre-misrepresentation, which was post-surgery, end-of-life care and, and cancer, cancer pain, and, and grueling accidents for a short time after a terrible accident, but, but there should be a rollback from the very free use of opioids, almost as if it was Tylenol that went on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan of the family, the company, I don't mean to imply that, but I, 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 I'm very cautious about taking an official position as an elected official, that in effect has me wading into the medical field.
Right, no.
And for me to, to keep saying, let's sue them and to try to effect change in medical practice, I have a problem with that, it bothers me, so that's why I just want to know, what are we looking to do here? And that's one thing, and then the other thing is, of course, when we talk about punitive damages, which obviously I'm in favor, if I wouldn't be voting for this all along, and I, and I, I've heard you talk about all the different things that are going on, all the different parties involved.
So many parties.
Your, your disagreement, if you will, with potentially the state's approach, and that, so I, I look at it again, from a practical perspective, if this all goes according to plan, they're punished somehow, they acknowledge wrongdoing- They acknowledge wrongdoing and, um, and a certain amount of money is, is paid to try to be applied to mitigating the damages, horrendous damages that we find in our communities. Then I have to start thinking myself, well, who is best suited to actually implement that?
Right.
Handle the money?
Right.
And I'm a big, I'm all for local control. I mean, that's, I'm a big believer in local control. But at the same time, who really administers or provides the programs that we turn to with these problems? All the time we talk about things, we do it with a state grant. We do it with this, we do it with that. We don't operate clinics locally. We don't have a Wallingford opioid abuse clinic. We have the most, we have a wonderful programs. We have the great agencies. We have a local group that, we have amazing people. But what do we really wanna do with this money? And what's gonna be the most practical and efficient way to utilize it? When it, when it's, when and if it's dished out? So I'm, so I'm also sitting there thinking, you know, why are we fighting the state's plan so much? So see that this, this is where I'm all, like, what if, if you said to me, congratulations, Wallingford, we won. Here's $200,000.
What would you do with it?
Well, yeah, what are we gonna do with it realistically? But if, if they said, congratulations, Connecticut, here's $300 million. Now, all of the regional agencies, the regional facilities, the regional programs that we can all take advantage of, that are the, that are the pros at this, that may be the most effective way on the ground to make this work.
No, I think.
So this.
I think, I, you, you raise all good points. And I think that abatement fund, the 70%, and why I'm saying you should be, that's the next thing. Because settlement talks are going on and they will ultimately, probably that is how this case will resolve. And it will resolve into the abatement fund. And it will be a combination of not just states and cities. There'll be a federal aspect as well. They haven't sued at all. But, um, because there's certain things that you can't do. The prescription monitoring is very effective. There, it's, it's definitely going to be a combination. I don't want the, the local, the locals, some of the Attorney Generals called the states, the localities, the subdivisions, to be left out of the decision and to have it come just from the state. I want it to be a joint discussion. And you should have absolutely a seat at the table of what, of what works, what doesn't work, what the need is, what, you know, what follow-up is, what's effective measures and which ones aren't. Cause it's gonna be an abatement fund. What people are talking about is 15, 20 years of this abatement fund. So it's going to be monitored, you know, it's gonna be a long time. And you have to use all the resources. And I'm, I, I'm not sure that the state working alone, I think, in fact, I guess I am sure that the state working alone is missing a big opportunity. There should be input from the localities on the ground.
So, so you would prefer that there was more cooperation?
Very much so.
I see. Cause when I hear that we're fighting on four fronts.
Well, they're four.
Well, there's, yeah, not us particularly.
There are four fronts. There's the ones that ran to bankruptcy court and there's others behind Purdue that are probably gonna run in. And then there's the state case. And then there's the M D L case, which we're involved with now since we're a part of the class. And then the fourth is the A Gs, who are not a unified group by any means. They're divided amongst themselves, worse than anything. But I, I do fear that they are not going to get the best amount, get the best settlement from the distributors. They haven't sued them. And I also fear that the money that they put in the abatement fund has to be, you have to have a seat at the table on that. Those are my big fears with the state A G. But, um, they're, they're a real factor and they are going to get some money. And probably, they're probably gonna settle with the distributors. And, um, we're gonna have to work with them to the best effect for everybody.
I'm sure you're gonna come to us for some type of decision in a little while. Hopefully a little while if I shut up. But, um, you're telling me that, that, the strategy is geared more toward some type of punitive resolution as opposed to changing the business?
It's, the strategy is really, most people say the strategy is geared toward abatement. That damages are difficult to prove and they're limited.
Well, that's what I meant. I call it abatement if you wish, okay.
Not, and, and not really, um, not really changing the policy. I mean, the policy is sort of failing on its own. Most of these products have such a bad reputation. That's why OxyContin sales are decreasing on their own. So I think the public and the, the public reaction and what's happened to so many people in so many communities of unwanted and unknowing addiction has sort of dried up the practice on its own. They don't need to be punished anymore. In, in a way, they need to pay. That's what I think. They need, they, they, a lot of companies made billions of dollars from these products. The manufacturers from misrepresenting, the distributors from knowing that they were not, that they were, were sending them, selling them for use, for diversion, not for legitimate use. Let's get some of those billions back into the community and, and help fix the problem.
That, that answers my question.
I think that most people.
I appreciate that, yes. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, I think in terms of leaving it up to the state, we have two pretty good examples of where money was identified for a given purpose and diverted for other purposes. And one is the casino money that was supposed to fund education. And the other, of course, is the tobacco money, much of which went to things other than dealing with tobacco as a, as a, as an addictive and, and cancer-causing agent. So given that history, we are well advised to have a direct grasp at damages rather than depending upon someone else to hear us.
I agree, Mayor.
If there's nothing else from the council, before we go on to item four, I'm gonna just jump ahead and move the consent agenda, if I can have that motion, please.
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through O.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. With that, item six L, Jennifer Passeretti was appointed to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Madam Clerk, if you could please swear her in. Thanks for signing up. Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion on item four.
I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statute, sections one dash two, two, five F and sections one dash two hundred six B to discuss thing, to discuss the pending opioid, opioid.
Opioid?
Opioid, opioid litigation.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the chambers. Call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, I, the meeting is back in public session. We have no action for item five. I'm gonna jump ahead right now to item nine, which is discussion and possible action regarding the Wallingford Education Association Contract, 2020, 2023, the Board of Education. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from this. My sister is a teacher at Lyman Hall, so I won't be taking part in the discussion or the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself as well. I work with his sister.
Duly noted. Not, not because of where you work, but because you work with his sister.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. If you could just remind us who you are for the record, please.
Sure. Uh, Danielle Belizzi, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Wallingford Public Schools.
Dominic Burrow, Business Manager, Public Schools.
Good evening. Roxanne McKay, Wallingford Board of Ed Chair.
Okay. So you have in front of you tonight, the teacher's contract. This is a three-year contract, so it will start July 1 of 2020 and go till June 30 of 2023. To get right into the wages, this in year one of 2021, it would be a 1.65 G W I increase plus step for those who are not at the top step, which would give us a total for that year of 2.99. Year two, G W I would be a 1.65% increase plus step movement for those that are not at top step, which would be a 2.90 increase for the year. And for the last year, the 2022, 23, it would be G W I of 1.65% for those, a plus step movement for those who are not at the top step, which would be a 2.81% total. So the total for all three years would be 8.7% increase. Moving on to the salary differentials. This talks about appendix D, F, G and H, the stipends and coaches stipends and things. The first year would maintain the current pay that it is right now for this contract. The second year, there would be a G W I increase of 1.65%. And then the third year, it would maintain the increase that was given in the second year, which is typically what we've done in the past for the other contracts, past prior years. Medical coverage moving forward. We did increase the H D H P deductible to 2,250 over 4,500. The co-insurance max of 4,000, 8,000 and the cost share max of 5,000, 10,000. We did change the H S A deductible when they are going to receive the payments. So in July, they'll get 25%. September, it will be 25% and 50% in January. Teachers will pay for all three years, a 21.5% premium cost share for the H D H P H S A plan. That will remain the same for all three years. That's currently what it is right now and it will remain that way for the next three years. Uh, underneath the waivers of insurance, the waivers stay the same, but we did add language that employees who are not receiving the waiver as of July 1 of 2020 shall not be eligible for payments moving forward. And it will be closed to new members after July 1 of 2020. Under the early retirement or early incentive for retirement, one of the changes we made here is currently teachers have the option of the P P O or the H D H P plan. If they choose the P P O, they pay a buy-up for that. In retirement, they were available, it was available for them and it still is for them to choose either, either plan, but they were not paying the buy-up continuing on in retirement if they chose the P P O plan. So we changed the wording so that they are going to pay the buy-up if they choose that P P O plan in retirement. One of the things we added to this, to Article seven under leaves was sick leave bank. And, uh, some of the highlights through the sick leave bank, um, I'll just highlight some of them for you, is that the teacher has to be employed with us for four years or more. They are entitled to this bank if they are under catastrophic illness. Teachers can choose to donate one day to this particular bank. The teacher who is granted the leave is granted up to 30 days and it's one time per year. And teachers are paid the per diem, their per diem rate minus the subpay for the day. So currently our daily subrate is $80 a day. So teachers who would qualify under the sick leave bank would get their per diem rate minus the $80 a day. Also underneath leaves for leave for death in the family, we maintain the same five days that they get for any kind of death in the family. But we did add that they are allowed to use one of those five days for individuals other than an immediate family or extended family. So that was the only change there. Article 10, we have, currently have an M O U that is standing for mandated trainings that we require throughout the district. So these trainings, we just kind of incorporated them into the contract as opposed to leaving them as an M O U. It is four and a half hours that the teachers complete on their own. And we just listed the trainings that we require them to make sure they finish. And these are the rough dates, give or take a day every year. It changes, but they all must be done by the end of December. Under Article 12 for preparation and planning, under the current contract for high school and middle school, it's lumped together under 12.1 and 12.2 as secondary. We decided that it would be better to break it out to high school and middle school and to really codify what they're doing now and what their schedules look like in terms of planning and preparation and in terms of the schedule that they have. High school and middle school do not have the same schedule. And so we broke it down here to make sure that it does show exactly what they are following every day. Same thing for elementary prep periods under 12.6. We included pre-K in the language there. So, and we also cleaned up the language to really show again what's happening in current practice and what the library media specialists are doing, pre-K through grades two in our schools and in grades three through five in those schools as well. Under payroll, we did clarify and clean up the Janice language. So we added under 13.11, the may join, we put that word in. Underneath the deductions, um, we did clean up the language here that agrees to deduct from each teacher who has authorized such deductions in writing. Under the schedule for payroll deductions here, um, in the past, teachers have always been able to obviously make changes to their voluntary deductions, but it's been done on a schedule basis. So now moving forward, once this contract takes place, they can make these changes to their deductions, to their checks at any given time. So they can just submit the form to Dominic's office. And when, as soon as practical, they will make those changes so that they don't have to wait and follow the certain schedule that was given in the past. We made sure that all teachers moving forward are going to have to participate in direct deposit. They will continue to be paid on bi-weekly basis, but there will be no separate payroll run outside of the scheduled bi-weekly pay periods. We also took a look at that 26 payment schedule and codified the fact that if they are getting those five checks, in the past, they got five paper checks. Now they will get the one lump sum check for the summer before they leave for the summer break. So the pay is the same. It's just the way we administer it is a little different. The staff referral system, um, we talked about here about having a prepared list of staff that are available to fill into a classroom if there are no subs available. So we will have agreed to not ask our current teachers when they have a prep time or some, or free time in their schedule to sub unless we are at a loss for finding a sub to cover the class. And the last section there kind of just goes over some of the M O U's that we've had in the past that we've added to the contract moving forward. We are maintaining, we have a golf position, coach position right now at Sheehan that is, has two head coaches to it. We cleaned up the language to make sure that there is a comptroller stipend in there and the team leader stipend. We took out two stipends that we are not, haven't used in the past few years. And the stipend committee for the teacher. And the stipend committee for the teachers is going to meet to look at all of the clubs that we have, that we currently pay stipends for. And decide which ones they are going to continue to move forward and which ones they are no longer using. Um, the one thing we discussed was to make sure that we keep the number the same, and they're broken down by tiers so that the amount that we are paying in stipends stays the same, but they may choose to add, delete, or substitute one, uh, moving forward. And in addition, we just changed the language from guidance counselor to school counselor. And we added for lead school counselors, which there is one at each high school. Um, they will work twenty extra days for a nine thousand dollar stipend.
Thank you. Questions from the council, Counselor Fishman?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, the, the direct deposit, you know, is a good thing moving forward. Um, why though do we have the two different? Because this appears to be, um, different than, let's say, Public Works would have, that, that lump sum check. Why not just do the, the twenty-six direct deposits? Or is that something that the bargaining unit wouldn't?
So if, per their piece, somewhere in the contract, it says that when they leave for the summer, they get paid for the, if they choose the twenty-six pays, then that's how we pay it, so that's how they wanted it. Typically, in the past, we've given them five paper checks, correct? Uh, on the last day of school, so instead of giving five paper checks, we're gonna give them just the one direct deposit.
But by contract, they, they had the option of, we call them twenty-one pays or the twenty-six pays.
Okay, and, and I guess this is twenty-one pays or twenty-two pays?
Twenty-two?
No, it's twenty-two.
It's tw- tw- I'm sorry.
Twenty-one or tw- yeah.
Okay.
What we have here under this language is twenty-one pays or twenty-two pays?
Well, we, we break out the twenty-two pay as twenty-six, so they'll, you know, so they'll get less, uh, you know, until the end of the year. So, you know, if two teachers make the same amount of money, if one gets twenty-one pays, we, we divide it by twenty-one. If one gets what you're calling twenty-two pays, we call twenty-six because we divide it by twenty-six. So every paycheck up until the, to the last one is divided by twenty-six. And then we, we basically, in my mind, it's a lump sum.
Yeah, no, I, I just. I don't know, trying to get everybody on the same system, right? And now, since you're not having to, you know, take a paper check and go to the bank with it. You know, why it, it wasn't just, you know, twenty-six payments or twenty-two payments, you know? It just.
We were, I, I was just happy not to have to do five separate checks. That was, you know, it was an operational, uh,
Okay.
Thing that we took on.
The other thing is, um, the nice try at the Janus language. So let's look at that. On page twenty-five. I mean, essentially, the way this is set up is everybody in this bargaining unit is a teacher. And we recognize that there's a constitutional right to, to join the union, there's a constitutional right to not join the union. And, and it says may, right? So it's like sets and subsets. We have teachers as the set, and the two subsets are union members and non-union members, right? That's, that's how this works. Okay, so. How do I, with that understanding? How do I dovetail into that understanding of sets? This sentence. Those teachers whose employment commences after the start of the school year shall pay a prorated amount equal to the percentage of the remaining school year. Unfortunately, you know, reading comprehension, it should say those teachers who employment commences after the school year who have joined the union shall pay. So this language, once again, is not in compliance with the law. So how do I deal with that? Because I'm gonna tell you that I did spend a lot of time, and I did find a case from before I was even born that addresses this. It addresses the whole savings clause issue. It's the case of Gaynor, it's National Labor Relations Board versus Gaynor. It's a Second Circuit federal case. And in that case, the savings clause said, similar to what's in these contracts, should any provision in this agreement be in conflict with federal or state law or regulation, then such provision shall continue in effect only to the extent permitted, right? Um, and what the court ultimately said was, what's in the decision? An employee cannot be expected to predict the validity or invalidity of particular clauses in the contract and will feel compelled to join the union where a union security clause of questionable valid, validity exists. Only a specific provision deferring application of the union security clause will immunize the contract from this illegality. So what the court said was that this sort of thing is, is illegal, and it's a prohibited labor practice. So how do I allow this to occur when it says shall, shall pay? What am I to, what am I to do?
I guess in my mind, it's a prorated amount, and the amount was zero because they didn't join the union and were prorating zero.
But it, but if the set is teachers and the subsets are those who have joined the union and those who have not joined the union. And you don't distinguish in that, that provision. It says those teachers, so that's the set. Whose employment commences after the start of the school year shall pay. It doesn't distinguish. It mandates that all of those teachers whose employment starts after the start of the school year shall pay, whether they join or not. That's what it says. That's the simple language that's before me. So. You know. Nice try, but we're still not there.
I will bring it back to our council and have her take a look at it, and I will bring your suggestions with it. And I'll discuss it with her.
I thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else from the council? Any comments, questions from the public? Mister Gross?
Bob Gross Long Hill wrote, I have a question on the waiver. You figured much, huh? Um. Yeah. Said there was no changes in the waiver, but you said people can still join getting into this waiver program?
No, they can no longer.
Okay.
They cannot. At the end of the year, they can't get on it.
Okay, because you mentioned somebody to twenty-twenty, till now, till twenty-twenty, they're still able to get on?
No, when this contract takes effect, if they're not on the waiver then.
But this contract doesn't begin until twenty-twenty.
Okay.
Right.
Twenty-twenty.
So this still, so they still have an opportunity to get on between now and then?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought I heard. That's what I was, and so, um, how much is the waiver? Per individual, family, and what does it cost the entire town for this waiver?
Sure. So for family, it's two thousand. Uh, two-person, it's fifteen hundred, and individual, it's a thousand.
And in this year's contract?
Mm-hmm. Currently, right now, we have a hundred and ten people that take the family waiver. We have twenty-one that take the two-person and zero for the individual.
So dollar-wise, what's the cost of the town approximately? I don't, twenty times forty thousand?
So it costs us roughly right now two hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Every year? It's not a one-time cost, it goes, is, so are there diminishing numbers on that? So will next year? Or anytime during this three-year contract, it'd be less than, if the same number of people are in it, will it go, if there's the X number of people, is there diminishing numbers on the percentage that they will get every year?
No, the waiver amount stays the same.
Stays the same, so there's no, the only thing that really changes in this is nobody can join into the waiver in twenty-twenty. And any new employees, of course. Are new employees who've been hired within the last five years or something, are they still eligible for this waiver, or have they been excluded?
So, new people that have been hired these past five, yes, because it's always been available to them.
So they're still available to join it?
It's available to them until this new contract takes effect.
So everybody, every member is available for it?
Right now.
Okay. Um. Is, do you foresee this ending at some point? Because there doesn't seem to be any any wording in here to at least lower the amount of percentages being paid, because it is, as you said, two hundred and something thousand dollars a year. Times four years, it's a million dollars.
Correct. And so that is something we're gonna continue even for the next contract to focus on.
And this contract expires in twenty-twenty-three?
Three years, yes, three years.
So, alright.
And, you know, um, Bob, I would also say, and we've had a lot of discussion about this at Board of Ed, because, you know, we, we worry about, is there, um, a tipping point, if you will, where if you make it too low, people will, um, just take the insurance and, and that, you know, what's the cost differential? So that's something that we struggle with, um, you know, where, where's that sweet spot? That makes sense, uh, financially for the Board of Ed. You know, obviously, we were up in years, many years ago, like three million dollars this was costing us, so we've made significant movement, um, on this. Obviously, two hundred and fifty thousand is.
That's just the teachers' unit. There, you have other under the umbrella that's still participate in this.
Correct. Yeah, we've been, we've been.
Right, I know it's been coming down, but it's not just two fifty-one, there's other units that participate in this.
That's true. So, I mean, it, it is, it is a concern, and it's forever a concern for us, and, and finding that right position, um, that not too many people will take advantage and, and, and not take advantage of it, and then take the insurance, but finding that balance is, is really, I, I don't think we're there yet. I think there's still room, and, and we do continue. I think it's been a priority of this board to chip away at this and, and make it, you know.
Because you said that, I, I think the number was twenty-one percent is the premium amount that the you know, twenty-one point five the teacher would pay, so on a ten thousand dollar premium, they're paying twenty-one hundred and fifty dollars. So that's also the added savings by opting out, so for them to go in, they have to, they would have a incentive not to go in because they were paying part of the premium, and nobody wants to get sick.
Right.
I mean, nobody wants to use these benefits if they don't have to. So, I mean, it's just.
True.
I'm just, hopefully, and this is to, through the chair to Attorney Fishman, I just have one quick question. If somebody opts out of the Janus clause, are they still entitled to tenure and all the same benefits that the union employees get? Just out of curiosity, are they? I mean, this is just a, off, because it's, it's a yes or no, really, it's quick. It's because it always mentions the Janus, and I have no idea.
I, I'm going to make an exception and allow you to answer this question. Just because I feel like it would be a missed opportunity if I didn't.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, because they are tethered to the collectively bargained contract, they have the benefits of the collectively bargained contract.
Without paying for them. Because they don't have to pay in.
That, um. That's not necessarily true, but.
Alright, thank you. I was just curious, because you always bring it up the Janus, and so they were mentioning, okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just with regard to the waivers, I do want to state, though, that, uh, certainly administratively, we are not in agreement with any waivers, because any amount of a waiver is money that normally would go into our reserve if not used. So, you know, certainly, my belief is that any money spent for insurance should be utilized for that insurance category. It actually just becomes ordinary income when the waiver is paid, and the, any money left over does not help fund our reserve. So I realize there's a budgetary impact, but what we do by maintaining waivers is really distort what's going on with, with our insurance.
Mister Gross? I have one quick question for the chair through the, to the Board of Ed. You mentioned that you're going through direct deposit. In your studies or whatever, did you find that it's less costly or more costly to do direct deposit?
It, operationally, it, it's, it's more efficient, um, because we're, you know, we have, uh, we're not stuffing checks and, and all that, but we haven't done the cost impact on it.
So you won't have any lost checks, you won't be writing checks, so essentially it's just a hitting of a button and, and putting the number, so.
That is correct.
So potent, so theoretically, you have to assume that it would be cheaper or less expensive? Chairman said labor-intensive for sure, yeah. Thank you.
Mister Chairman. On the subject of the transactions by banks, whether it's a direct deposit or whether it's a check. The bank has a transaction fee. That all depends upon the bank you use and how often that fee may change. So there there, there may or may not be any, I, I don't think there is any financial advantage. I agree with Mister Barone. The efficiencies can be affected, however, the efficiencies are probably only optimal when everyone must be on direct deposit. Otherwise, you're running two systems. And, uh, whether you can get everyone to be on direct deposit is another whole question. I know banks often tell people with accounts, oh, get on direct deposit, it's free. No, it's not free to the employer.
Counselor Fishman, then Counselor Lutturna.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I just briefly on that, that issue, um, on the waiver, is that taxable income to the employee?
Yes.
Okay, so we issue a, what, a W two, separate W two for that?
No, it's just, it's just put into the, the additional W, you know, the regular W two. So if you make X and the waiver's a thousand, your W two would say X plus a thousand.
So it's a box one increase on the W two. Is there deductions for like Medicare and that kind of stuff, or is it just, because usually, um maybe you don't know, but, but it is taxable.
I believe it's taxable. I believe it's subject to, uh, FICA and Medicare also, but I'm
Okay.
Hundred percent on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Medicare piece.
Uh, Counselor Lutturna?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. On the, uh, direct deposit with this contract, everybody will be on direct deposit, right?
All the teachers.
All the teachers, okay. And that still leaves the the administration side not on it?
The administrators also have, there, it's not required, but most of them have direct deposit.
Okay. And what about the retiree, retired teachers?
We don't, uh, we don't pay the retired teachers. That's paid by the state, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Um. And, uh, going back to the cost, so there's the efficiency. So being more efficient in itself should save some cost than doing things manually. I mean, that just.
Well, I, I mean, it, we're still, you know, somebody might not have to spend an hour with checks, but there's other work to do, so are we, I think we're, I, I think efficiency is, maybe we're able to do different things.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like we're gonna take an hour out of the week and not pay somebody.
Would you be able to get, you know, some, put some costs with this and, and get it to us for, uh? Well, I, I'd like to find out what the, um, the, the direct deposit cost is as opposed to not, um, to do it manually. Or when you were doing it manually, what was the cost? And then, you know, what's the cost with, with direct deposit? Thank you.
Mister Chairman, just on that point, I want to make everyone aware, this is twenty-six weeks. Our current system for general government is fifty-two weeks. I don't have any problem with direct deposit if we're on a twenty-six week bi-weekly pay. Otherwise, we're paying the maximum amount for transaction fees you can possibly pay at a, at a fifty-two week program.
Are we gonna volley back and forth?
Well, I, I, I'm ready to stop at any given point.
Need a line judge.
Well, maybe Mister Fishman could be line judge. May I?
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a definitive cost, Mayor, with this? What is, what would it cost the town to do this?
We know that we cut our costs in half by going from fifty-two weeks to twenty-six. So we, we don't have efficiencies. Right now, we have four different pay weeks, and they're done weekly.
Right.
No corporation, the. No corporation the size of Wallingford would function that way. So we have a staff in the finance department that handles that. If it were every two weeks, it would be far more efficient and obviously cost effective because you cut in half the number of transactions.
The cost is the cost, Mayor. Whether it's twenty six weeks or fifty, fifty two weeks, the cost is the cost. I mean, you know, that, that's really, but we haven't ever gotten a figure of what the cost is.
We can give you the cost of what the transaction fee is to the bank. So you'd have it for twenty six weeks and you double it for fifty two weeks.
Not necessarily, but, okay.
Oh, absolutely factually. It's every transaction fee.
The last time I costed it out, Councilman, in all honesty, was about five years ago. And the reason why I don't waste my time anymore, I certainly will do it for you folks, absolutely, and we're gonna do it for Dominic. Because our unions on our side don't want to get off a weekly pay. And I cannot do direct deposit on a weekly pay base and still meet other provisions of State Department of Labor law, which means person works, person gets compensated within a certain number of business days after that. The only way I can do it is to lag another week and I violate another state law. And you're going to get sued over that. So until we get, and we don't negotiate, the Mayor and I, until our contracts allow, and it's in our contracts, I don't believe it's in the Board of Ed's, until we get rid of that weekly language, it's, it's, you know, you could talk about it all day, all night, it doesn't matter.
Thank you, Mr. Bose, thank you.
I, I wish it were different.
Yeah, I, I wish too. And as long as I've been up here and into the future, I, I don't see us ever doing that because we have contracts that we've negotiated now that have never had the provision put in it for, for bi-weekly. Some do, some don't. So that's another story.
I'm, I'm still hopeful, to be honest with you. Seriously, I am.
Thank you.
Alright, uh. Gentlemen in the back, I'm sorry, I just noticed your hand. If you want to speak, you have to come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Saad Abis. Saad Abis, S A I D A B I S.
Address?
Nineteen Backes Court.
Thank you.
Alright, just uh, I see all of you were going back and forth, how long it's gonna cost weekly, bi-weekly. Just curiosity, are the teachers getting paid salary? Like one, say a teacher is making forty thousand a year, that's what they are making for the whole year? And they get their twenty six paychecks divided, just.
Twenty six or twenty two under this contract?
Twenty two. Just, you can plan it the first week of the year and they will get the same paycheck.
Well, the teachers are in a different situation than some of this town's bargaining units where there's not overtime to be considered and that sort of thing. So they're more likely to be stuck on a fixed salary and, and to calculate twenty six or twenty two equal checks.
So yeah, they're not getting like, they're not uh, working overtime or anything like that.
Not like our plow truck operators.
So they are getting the same paycheck every week. They know if they are gaining five hundred and sixty three dollars and eighty five cents, that's every paycheck. That's what they are anticipating. So that will make it easier to fix. It's not a big issue, I think.
And they, the teachers are on direct deposit.
So, uh, so that was uh, my question.
Thank you. Alright, and do you need action from us or will this be approved within action?
For another year, right?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Um, it, it can be approved within action, but I've seen it where there's counselors that just likes to put a bow on it and I've seen it both ways, but inaction is action.
Both ways too.
Yes, but inaction, it, it can be considered um, action for us. That would be fine.
Okay. Oh, Counselor Letturno. Just please, please don't talk about direct deposit.
No, I won't, I won't. I would like, um, I would like to approve this contract as, as presented to us.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second. Moved and seconded.
That's the bow.
Was the second? Counselor Zandry. Alright, any further discussion on the council? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll noting that Counselor uh, Testa and Chortel have abstained?
Thank you. Fishbein?
No.
Laughing?
Yes.
Letturno?
Yes.
Barone?
No.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Um, you're not going to stick around for item ten?
Oh, yeah. Actually, we have Board of Ed meetings.
Okay. So Counselor, uh, so uh, Chairman McKay, how many terms were you on the Board of Ed? Is this seven terms?
Um, yeah, seven, yes, seven terms.
And was it four as chairman or?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
Okay. And I suspect that you're not going to be back before us in one of the next two meetings.
Okay, I, I don't anticipate it, but um, yeah.
So before you run away to your other meeting, first of all, I want to thank you for your patience tonight. I know it's been a long night.
No, actually, it was one of the most informative, informative um, sessions. I, I was amazed at how much I learned. So I appreciate that opportunity.
And I'm glad I could do that for you.
Yes, you did it well.
And uh, i- in light of your extensive uh, and I consider it exemplary service to the town as uh, an elected member of the Board of Ed and five terms as chairman, uh, I just want to thank you and I want to congratulate you and uh, hope you still come visit with us periodically.
Uh, well, I don't know if I'll visit, but I know, I, I thank you so much. It's been really my honor and pleasure to serve. And I've always appreciated coming in front of you guys and you're always a fun cheerful group to deal with, so. Uh, and congratulations for all, all being re-elected. Um, Mr. Letturno, you and I are going to be doing happy hours somewhere. Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you. Alright, item ten is to consider and approve a carry forward to the unspent, uh, unspent balance of four hundred seventy eight thousand, one hundred and twenty one dollars Board of Education funds into the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one percent account. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the carry forward to the unspent balance of four hundred and seventy eight thousand, one hundred and twenty one dollars Board of Education funds to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one percent accounts.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion from the council. Counselor Fishbein?
Haven't we changed the name of this thing? I thought it was the two percent account now.
Wow, I, I don't, I don't know if you can. Doesn't, isn't there some charter language that, that needs to go along with that or? I actually asked that to Jim. I asked him about that.
Yeah.
Hartford and.
I think that passed, correct?
Yeah.
It does. I don't think, if it ever got to two percent of the budget, that'd be a ton of money. I don't think, whatever, yeah, we, we'll, we'll rephrase.
Okay.
I was not sure if actually that had passed or not, but I know we are well under the number, so. That's not the official. We just refer to that sort of colloquial, 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 can't even say the word, forget about it. But that's actually part of our assigned fund balance.
And then, am I to understand that utilization of those funds that we are the gatekeeper for? So um, does it roll into your budget for next year?
It doesn't roll under budget. It's kind of uh, kept on the side, so it doesn't uh, change the legal amount that they had to spend that was arrived through the budget process, but it's an additional, it's an additional funds that they could spend.
So it's the MBR plus this amount that can be spent next year?
Well, that's.
It's, it's the authorized budget amount plus um, plus this amount.
Yeah, okay.
But, but as far as the gatekeeper, I mean, these funds are treated no differently if we, you know, if we need to go out to bid, they go through the purchasing department, et cetera, so from.
But do we, you know, when we approve the budget, essentially, we don't have control over the fact that that's, that money actually gets spent for those things? Because the Board of Education makes those, those actual boots on the ground determination.
Correct.
So am I to expect that with our next budget presentation sometime in the spring, that um, there will be a earmarking of where this money is going to be spent?
Yes, there, there actually is already. The Board, the Board of Ed has already, you know, we, we brought this number to the board and said, here's, you know, where we think we would spend it.
I just wanted Roxanne to come back.
Yeah, I'm back.
Have I asked enough questions?
I, I, I'm, I, yeah, I had to come back for this, but go ahead. I don't want to interrupt. I wanted to ask something.
We did, I mean, we did identify capital and non-recurring type expenditures. Um, and so it's not just uh, four hundred seventy eight thousand dollars that, that, you know, we have to decide what to do with. We've identified security projects, technology, vehicles, et cetera, that the board has approved.
Yeah, I, I wanted to make that, I wanted to just underscore the point that um, the one thing we do is we, we always um, um, assign those funds to non-recurring um, capital projects, like whether it's upgrades to technology. Um, we've got some money earmarked for um, some more, um, so we're not coming to you folks. We know we need to do a deeper dive on uh, what are we doing with our secondary education, uh, our secondary schools? So um, you know, just, we're, we're gonna have to do some more study work on that. So that's something, you know, again, it's a non-recurring expense, but you know, a one-time expense item, Craig, if we can utilize those funds and not tie them up, tie up our regular budget, that's great. But, and not bother you folks for coming back for extra, for any extras.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I think that's really important to me because I, I wouldn't want to see that money go for, you know, um, salaries.
Never, never, never would happen.
Because the following year, we'd have it.
That's right. That would not be a very prudent usage.
I know that happens in other towns.
We do not do that.
That are utilized. So I just, we don't have control over that, but I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that.
I, I came back for that. I wanted to make sure that that's understood. I mean, not to take away from Dominic, but I, you, uh, that's really been very important to Board of Ed members that we only use them for capital, non-recurring expenses.
Because otherwise, before.
It's not sustainable.
Exist, the money would nerf back to the town. It would go whereal, wherever, but I'd rather see it, you know, one-time expenses. So thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chortel. Welcome back, Roxanne.
I want to have all my money here.
Right, so um, I'm going to preface my remarks by saying I'm going to vote for this, but you're probably not going to like my remarks because I struggle with this one. Uh, just some numbers. This started, my, my first year on the Board of Ed was when this account started in twenty fourteen, or fiscal year thirteen, fourteen. And we've had an aggregate of three point seven million dollars in this account since that, including tonight's number. It's an average of uh, six hundred thirty two thousand dollars change a year. I think it's a good thing for the reasons that you said. I know we've used it to buy Chromebooks, we've used it to buy even textbooks. It was one year on the board. We tried to put more of that in the regular budget. So that's all good. I think where I, where I struggle, being a parent of kids in the elementary schools, is I know teachers who use their own money to buy school supplies and who buy books for their classrooms. I go to PTO meetings and they talk about all the money they need. And they, the PTO parents work their tails off trying to fundraise. You know, the schools are even, I mean, I think every school is even being asked to create a float for the three fiftieth parade, which is a whole nother issue. So that's just an example, but I mean, i- it's hard for me to look at almost a half million dollars of surplus and then know that those things are happening. And then I look, then I look at other things, you know, that I, again, I'm biased. I'm a parent of a YMCA Dolphin. We pay big money to Ushian. And so, you know, YMCA is a nonprofit. Their mission pretty much aligns with Wallingford Public Schools' mission. So I mean, it'd be a nice gesture, maybe to give some of that money back. I don't know. So this is what's going through my head. So I'm going to vote for it, but I'm not going to be happy about it. And I guess I just, that's my struggle. So I'm, that's not even really a question, but if you're, you know, if you want to respond or not, it's fine.
I guess I would, I, I understand your concerns or comments, but I also would say that, you know, we're dealing with a hundred and two hundred, three million dollar budget. So percentage wise, you know, four, four hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money.
I understand that.
Percentage wise, uh, you know, so we, you know, we, we, we set our budget and we, and then when we see opportunities to, to save, we try to take advantage of that.
Five and a half, agreed. But, but that argument about, well, it's this one percent or point oh one percent. Let me just make a little story before you got to the district. Five years ago, the mayor during the budget process reduced the amount the Board of Ed was going to get by about this amount, by about five hundred thousand dollars. There was a Facebook page, there were signs, the room was loaded with parents. Let me tell you that that argument you just made, if one of us made it that night, would not have flown at all. Every single parent was up and we ended, I wasn't on the council, then a bunch of you were, but you all got the money restored. So, so that argument, it's great in this situation, didn't work when it's the other way around. And somehow, when the mayor just wants to take a little bit off, oh, oh, can't, can't touch a dollar. So I don't quite accept that.
Yeah, but you know, Chris, we haven't, um, you know, that, that, that mentality shifted many, many, many years ago about, you know, packing the town council and beating up you folks or the mayor on cutting us. And, you know, that is not our style. That has not been our style as.
Oh, it wasn't you, it was, it was parents.
Right, I know, but we've, we've worked really hard to educate our parents, so that is not, you know, that, that's really not the way we want to position ourselves. But also, I would also make it, I, I, I agree with Dominic's point, but I also would make an observation that slowly over the years, we've cut the allocations provided to our teachers because at the end of, at the end of June, at the end of our fiscal year, some of those allocations were not fully expended. So, you know, if, if, if I was a teacher and I was given, you know, X, Y, Z dollars, you know I would spend it down to the last penny. So, I mean, I, I get concerned when I hear, you know, on one aspect that teachers don't have resources when we, when we've cut some of their resources over the years because they left, they were left unused. So that's a little frustrating to me, to be honest with you. And, and I so, and I'm sure there are teachers that manage whatever allocations that are provided to them very, very well. And then maybe there's others that don't and that's, that's fine. But um, we did cut, we have cut their allocations over the years because they have been left unused. So I, that, I have this.
Not the teachers I encounter, and I'm not saying you're wrong. Maybe we're just talking to different.
But that's the thing, and that's, that's, every teacher has to advocate for themselves there um, to a degree. But um, but that has been our experience aggregate is that we cut that, we have been cutting them because of that reason. And when we're looking to be lean and, and to, you know, and, and be fiscally responsible and we're seeing allocations that have been given to schools and teachers, and we're not talking tons of money, but again, they weren't fully utilized. You bet we're going to cut those next year, then the following year.
I, I would just suggest revisiting it then. When my, when, when Zach's second grade teacher a year ago proudly points to all the books she bought, that teacher needs the money. I, maybe she's the only one.
Yeah, and.
I know, we, we, we could all pick off examples either side.
That's exactly right. But I guess that was kind of my point too. I just, I just don't want, uh, well, okay.
I got you though, I understand.
I think we both made our points.
We did. And all, the last comment though, you did get back four hundred thousand a year ago, so I want to put that up.
I, I was going to say that soon, but I, it's like, oh, you know, I don't know.
Still warms my heart.
You might want to go. And we put, and the other thing I would also mention about, um, I think it was what, two years ago, it might have been the same, I don't know, two or three years ago, where we had serious concerns about what our special ed allocation was going to look like. And we earmarked, I think, over two hundred and fifty thousand just for special ed. Um, oh, seven hundred and fifty, oh, excuse me.
Over seven hundred.
So over seven hundred thousand, um, Chris, was earmarked for special ed because of Hartford. And we didn't know what was going to happen to us. And that, I don't know where we are in that sum of money, but um, I, 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 if it's been utilized, it's been utilized for special ed. And that, and you need to know that too. Because that is one of our most volatile um, areas. We just don't know what to expect for special ed at any given time. So you need to remember that piece too, that we did allocate, I didn't, I didn't even remember, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand to special ed.
Thank you for putting up with me.
Oh, thank you for putting up with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, Counselor Zandry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So just to refresh my memory on this, the one percent account, this money's rolling over just from the last budget. This is like the remainder. This is the amount of money that people didn't just go out and buy reams and reams of paper for. We're going to put it to smart use. Now, when the money hits this account, does it have to be expended in this next year on cap and non-recurring? Is it, can it sit in the account for a number of years?
It can sit and then um, it can sit and we can spend it, you know, uh, if we, if we start a project and let's say it takes two years, it can sit for the two years.
Is there a limit to how long it can sit?
I don't believe so, Jim T.
The statute is um, very vague, so I'm going to say no. I think I was asked that before, Councilman.
I think I was asked that before councilman, and I I uh, I believe I'm being consistent with my answer.
So so my concern is a is a generic one, this is not specific to the Board of Ed. So I don't want anybody to feel like I'm I'm, you know, we have the same, we have the same problem, and it's a good problem to have technically here on the government side of business, we've got this huge general fund that keeps growing every year, budget balance, and some of it is allocated, some of it is reserved, so on and so forth. I I just wanna make sure that I get an understanding that we're not building up another rainy day fund, another general fund balance, another big savings account. Because again, use the easiest example, I'm gonna come back to myself, you know, my kids are in the system now, I'm paying it to the taxes now, I'm adding to this surplus fund, and eventually they'll be out of the school system. They won't get the benefit, other kids will, and I'm and I'm still content with that because I look at this occasion, education as a whole, and it's not done just because my kids leave the system, but the idea is that subsequent to the same issues I've got with a general fund balance being too high, at what point do we put a stop to it and really look harder at, yeah, I know it's a moving target, it's very hard to get within, you know, two tenths of a percent differential, but allocate it then to something, understand, pick a number that 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 you want as a cushion, and then find collective ways to line item, utilize it in a year or two or even three. My concern is to build it up too much, I mean, there's, I use this generic example when I talk about our general fund balance, not one of us in this room would allocate three thousand dollars to their checking account when only fifteen hundred is required for free checking. It makes sense to have a certain amount of cushion for specific reasons, but to overallocate it doesn't make any sense. So I mean, do, does the Board of Ed have a plan like that? Maybe that's, maybe that's what I should start with, do you guys have a plan to not just keep running that balance up?
Absolutely, we have, everything that goes in there is going in for a purpose, and then if something comes in under budget, and then then we would revisit the board and probably revisit you and say, you know, we thought the van was gonna be fifty thousand dollars and it was only thirty five, we've got fifteen thousand that needs to get reallocated or or whatever. So but yes, everything, I mean, you know, we have, we have itemized four hundred seventy eight thousand dollars, four hundred seventy eight thousand, one hundred twenty one dollars of expenditures across different items. Do we know exactly what they're gonna come in at? No, I mean, we've got, you know, we've got a voicemail system that we're out to bid on, you know, is it gonna be thirty thousand or forty thousand? We don't know, we take an estimate, and then once, you know, once we get it out, bid and and award it, we have, we can readjust it. So it's not, it's not just, like I said, it's not just a number that that, you know, in a piggy bank here, we have projects or items we wanna get done in the next six months to a year.
And the other thing I would add, Jason, I I appreciate your concerns, and I think they're very legitimate. The 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 real purpose of that one percent account, in my opinion, is it gives the central office the gift of time. So they have to close their books out by June thirtieth, so, but but they might have a lot of open, you know, they they have things, things that we've committed to that we wanna purchase, that can get purchased in the summertime, that they can research and, you know, be cost effective about, and spend the time to really figure out, get the biggest bang for the buck for whatever. Let's say we're buying two hundred Chromebooks or, you know, I don't know, a security, upgraded security system, or a van, for example. Rather than having to shove that down central office's throat, you know, by June thirtieth to make all those purchases, that allows them to spend the summer, a lot of it's really expended in the summer and then early fall. Um, it gives us the the gift of time to really not, to be able to process and make the best purchases that make sense for the district.
Yeah, and and to me, that's the spirit of what this this law is, you know, the establishment of a fund like this is for.
It is.
So that you you don't have to close those books out, you know, I made the example, you know, buying a bunch of, bunch of paper, we're gonna stockpile papers so we can use up, so we don't get that budget cut next year, rather be smart about it, be planful about it, and we may get better deals after, you know, like use Chromebooks as an example, maybe after everybody buys it, we get in, we can get in afterwards when there's a lull and they're more interested in making deal. As long as, as long as collectively, everybody feels like it's being utilized, like I said, even if, even if it took a year or two, and we're just not intentionally stockpiling it, I I'm comfortable with it.
I I would say the only, in my experience, and we've been doing this now, I don't know, maybe four years or so, with the one percent. I, the the special ed allocation is about the only one that I can come up with that we really said, you know, put, we didn't have a specific need, but again, we're fearful at what was coming down from Hartford for our reimbursement rates, so we kept that aside. But otherwise, the goal of the Board of Ed is to figure out what's the best usage for non recurring purchases um, in in a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, and I would be even even in the example that you just gave, even if the Board of Ed, or even if we did it as the town, said, listen, we we think X is the amount that we should have, and you guys built up to X, and then then if you exceeded X, you'd spend down to X and exceed X and spend.
Sure.
I, because you guys would have a plan, we, you would look at it, this is our contingency level, we'd like to stay at or just slightly above that, and then as time grows, and you feel like contingency needs to be more than, I'll just use a fake number, five percent, you're gonna grow it to five and a half, you kinda say, going forward, we're gonna operate at five and a half percent of of the total amount. It's, at least people can understand why you're doing what you're doing, so that when when they have a question, they feel like, well, that's fine, it's a smart thing to do, it's it's better than being in the hole, it's better than coming up short.
And and it's showing transparency to the taxpayer, and that's important.
Yeah, and I and I appreciate that, so thank you, thank you very much.
Anything else from the council? Questions, comments from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Maroon.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Esther has left for the night. Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye again, Roxanne.
Now I'm leaving, I swear on.
All right, back to item eight, the public question and answer period.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, through the chair to the controller.
Mr. Bose, you've been summoned.
My apologies.
He hasn't asked the question yet.
I waited. Last council meeting, there was a question about how are or how the town of Wallingford's investment people get paid.
Yes.
Did you check into that?
Yes, I did.
And?
The only, as I thought, but I stayed it that night, I could not say for one hundred percent surety, the only thing that they get is what we pay them. That is in their SEC annual filing as well, and I thought as much, but I I couldn't remember the last time I read that filing, so I I did not wanna let you leave that night with my one hundred percent guaranteed. They receive, they receive just their fixed fee from us, nothing else.
Which is about sixty thousand per year?
It's sixty thousand, that's correct.
And for that, they do what?
What they do is they they advise with us, they advise us on the appropriate allocation of the pension funds. As well as, as well as report those funds, potential management changes and things of that nature.
They also help you pick funds.
That's correct.
So they also, because I'm still confused why we have funds and why we don't have index funds then.
Well, we we do have a mixed bag of types of investments, and we also have a mixed bag of, let's call it investment strategies, indexing is great, we do have, I'm just gonna ask for a little leeway if you don't mind, I I believe around forty percent of our of our portfolio is invested in index funds, the rest are more actively managed through institutional mutual funds. So they're very, very broadly diversified, not only in the type of investments, but also in the style of investments. So that's, that's what's sort of recommended strongly for municipalities. Actually, I was.
Some municipalities, some index.
If I, if I may share something with you, two weeks ago, I went up to a a professional conference half day up in Rocky Hill, and the person there was a chief economic person for one of the larger banking institutions in Connecticut, if you wanna give me a call, I'll let you know, know his name. But anyway, moving forward, he was actually, this was sort of, what do you do with your pension funds now type of deal? Obviously, bringing your expectations down, which we have been doing several years ago, maybe ten years ago, our expected rate of return, we utilized eight percent, because that's what most of the universe used in a sixty forty split for a pension plan, sixty percent stocks, forty percent non stocks, let's just call it. Well, those expectations and in working with your actuary, actuaries is coming down. We decided to bring it down a little slowly, we're using now, we're we're down to about seven point three with our goal over the next few years of getting it down to seven percent, rather than spike everything all at once. So I think we've been doing a pretty good job, a very good job with that. But the second thing he said was something that was very, it made me think of you, believe it or not, and it wasn't a nightmare. It was the the fact that they are recommending to their clients, that their clients use more actively managed funds because the stock expectations and fixed income expectations as a whole are not as euphoric as we would like them to be, so I I didn't say we're gonna do that, but that was an interesting perspective, and he went on that topic for a good fifteen minutes, so.
And he had data.
If you do want that name, just give me a scream and I'll I'll be happy to dig it up for you.
It's just one person, and there's, if you look at all the data, there's no data to substantiate what he's saying, but what was I gonna say? Well, I'll just point, the person, his his name was William Fosse, I don't know if you know him or knew who he was.
What was his name, I'm sorry?
F O U S E, he died last week.
Okay.
Okay, and we all know of Vanguard as being the premier.
Sure.
But this is the guy who invented index funding back in the seventies. And then what he said, steeped in research by William Shart and other academics, Mr. Fosse concluded that in the long run, few stock pickers, fund managers could beat the market. Those who beat it in the short run might simply be by taking more risk and getting lucky. The fund managers he met early in his career were pro tax, pro taxing more, practicing more folk art than professions. And in the thirty years or thirty five years that he did it, he has outbeat the market all the time. And that holds true for pretty much everything, and when you're talking about indexing, you're saying you can index anything. You could index international, you can index small cap, large cap, so I don't understand the rationale, because over the last ten years, have you beaten the market with this?
Last ten years, yes, we have.
On your stocks?
On the whole portfolio.
No, stocks, not not bonds, because bonds are separate, we're talking stock.
Well, I I don't have a breakdown of it by category, I I just tend to look at it to, for the whole, the performance of the whole portfolio.
I mean, I can't ask for, it'd be interesting for the council to see that, because those kind of numbers are fifteen percent, ten years. Has the portfolio grown in those kind of numbers?
Uh, fifteen percent for stocks, no.
Well, that's what S and P has done, and that's why I'm saying the indexes, certain ones, and that's why I'm saying we really have to look at this. I don't know why we're in certain funds that we pay high fees for, that can't, in the long run, don't beat the market.
But we can't, there's another factor we have to consider, and that is the fact that each June thirtieth, our actuaries perform their valuation of the portfolio and arrive at the calculation for the next budget season. And if your eggs are all in one basket, so to speak, whether it's type of investment or style, you would pay a lot more for the next few years for losses. Now, for example, in two thousand eight, October or the fall of oh eight, most index funds lost tremendous amounts of money, thirty five percent or more, including some of the Vanguard funds. Our portfolio here lost about twenty percent, now, I'm not saying that's a great result, of course, but it requires us to put less taxpayer funds, because we we beat the market by 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 twice the result, we had twice a better result than the market, because we were diversified in not only in type of portfolio, but also by type of management. So.
Okay.
There's a little bit difference.
Your twenty something percent, is that just your stocks?
No, that was, that was the whole, that was the whole portfolio.
Okay, so when you, you're not comparing apples to apples again, because you're comparing bonds, which were going up, because I remember that time, because you were selling bonds, because you were rebalancing your portfolio during the downturn, and I couldn't figure out why, because you were selling bonds, which were growing up in value, because they were the safe bet, buying, selling those and buying stocks because your portfolio balance had become out of kilter. So if you're saying your stocks only went, if your whole portfolio went down twenty two percent or whatever the number was, that's understandable, but your stocks didn't go down only twenty two percent, so when you compare them to an index fund that went maybe down thirty or thirty five percent, yes, it did go down thirty or thirty five percent, because it's all stock, it wasn't, because they don't get out, they stay, they stay for the long haul. And the trouble with getting in and out of funds or anything, any funds, is that you miss those short term peaks that go up. And if you miss those, then your long term investment gain isn't as good. And you're saying that if you're narrow in index funds, but why can't, what difference does it make if you're in an aggressive index fund that's just small cap, under a hundred million dollars capitalization per stock, or large cap, billion dollars plus? Why aren't you in international indexing versus the funds from the other companies? They have lower fees, in the long run, you're gonna beat. So the at the saying that you have all your eggs in one basket, you don't, you can index, but you can index across a wide array of funds, EFTs, you can, you can narrow it down to just gold or just real estate or anything of that nature, whatever you want, you can narrow it down to, and some EFTs have zero fees now, nothing. I mean, if you wanna get narrow like that, you don't, I'm not saying too, but you can narrow everything down. So I that, none of this, I just hope the council, I mean, this has, this has been going on for years, and we keep losing the type of appreciation that we should be seeing on these funds, paying fees that we shouldn't, the appreciation, plus paying fees that could be lower, that we're not, that we're paying, we should be paying lower fees than we're paying now, you have some funds now, they're charging zero fees on some of the indexing funds, zero, where we're paying whatever, thank you.
Anyone else, Ms. Copefer?
Light Copefer, thirty five Whiffle Tree Road, on the, what's it called, constant agenda, I think, there was one item, three hundred and seven thousand and change in the Wallingford Electric Division. If I understand correctly, that is money that has not been spent last year for energy conservation incentives, is that correct? And that's why they want to transfer it to the account nine nine zero one?
In a nutshell, yes.
In a nutshell, thank you.
Because what happens is, if I may just, a minute, the electric division budget budgets revenue for that conservation program, which we collect from all the, everyone who pays an electric bill, and on the revenue side and on the expense side as well, so, but sometimes those projects don't match up within the same fiscal year, so the monies have been collected in one year, but not spent until another. So when you move into the new budget year, of course, you're still budgeting the same revenue and you're the same expenditure to make sure that they balance, but you might be spending more because you've collected that three hundred thousand dollars in a prior year, so they have to come back and take that out of their retained earnings, because that's where it is, to, and have the council, excuse me, the council appropriate it to spend it in the current year legally.
Okay.
But if you, if if we went back, probably since that program began and added up the revenues and the expenditures over time, I'll bet you they're about the same, but it sometimes it just, it it varies fiscal year by fiscal year sometimes.
Okay, and if I understand correctly, this money is still earmarked for conservation purposes and can be spent as incentives for either residence or business for energy conservation or renewable.
Well, these are, these are projects that have to be approved by the Wallingford Electric Division, and if it's something that becomes a little bit more of that they can't handle, there there is a consultant that we would utilize. there, there is a consultant that we would utilize to see if that is the, the proper and best use of those funds. But again, in a nutshell, you're correct.
Okay. So could public buildings, town buildings?
I believe.
Use those money?
No, I believe no.
Can they, can we use those, Mayor?
They can be. Whether it's a governmental project or private, they can be utilized for, uh, making those improvements, and they have been in the past.
Okay. So if I may come back to my question from the summer, if, just for example, the police wanted a solar carport, or the schools wanted, um, energy efficiency measures, let's say, heating and cooling upgrades, or maybe another solar panel on the middle school, could that money be used for those purposes?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think those projects as well would have to be evaluated by the WED to see, um, because the, the whole goal of that is to lower the electric demand.
Correct.
That's, that's what.
But I think that the cheapest energy always is the one we don't have to buy, or the Wallingford Electric Division doesn't have to buy on the forward capacity market. So if we could finance efficiency measures or renewables, and so buy less electricity on the market, I think that would benefit all taxpayers, all ratepayers.
That's why they're evaluated, to see who's gonna, which projects are going to provide the, uh, largest reduction in, in energy, electric energy.
Sure.
The difficulty comes in, our electric rates are low, so whether it's cost-effective to spend the money on a solar program, typically, you don't make the money back within a time period that makes it, uh, a, an economically worthwhile project. But, uh, it all depends upon what the project is, and whether it meets the requirements of the Electric Division to show that we are reducing costs.
Okay, I, I would just like to repeat, I think, even if our electric rates are low, it would be still cheaper to not buy any electric, or buy less, let's, let's say less.
Well, electric prices fluctuate as well, so that's what, I mean, we, we try to buy them in, um, um, tranches, if you will, as we go along, so that we have a portfolio of pricing involved, and sometimes your prices are, are coming down as well. So it's, you know, reliability is the number one, and then price usually follows that pretty nicely.
Uh, in general, we're paying somewhere around four cents a kilowatt. If we were buying solar, that's at nine cents a kilowatt, and wind is anywhere from nine to twelve cents a kilowatt. So it's very expensive power.
I understand.
You have to be able to show that, and the money we're collecting for it is in everyone's electric rate. So if we increase the rate, there might be more money, but the money is in your electric rate to provide money for conservation measures. If you can't show that there's a reduction in costs as a result of investing in solar or wind or whatever, then it doesn't work. You're, you're not really reducing your costs at all.
Well, the way I see it, um, if you would invest, let's say, those three hundred and seven and change in a solar array, and produce part of the energy that we're using, and you would not need to buy that energy on the market, I think we would save money.
Well, the problem is, though, the money you're spending for the solar is higher than if you just were buying, as we usually do it, four cents a kilowatt. You don't, you don't make that money back. I- if the amortization of, of the, of, of the project goes over twenty years, twenty-five years, you're, you're not making the money back, uh, that, in a way that really reduces any rates, you're going to have higher rates.
I don't understand why we would have higher rates if we don't buy the electricity anymore, because we're generating our own.
Well. I, I, I think.
The question is why?
I think, I think the best thing to do would be to talk to, uh, the Electric Division.
Okay.
At, at their, at their, uh, meeting, or, or contact Mr. Hendershaw. It, it is a very complicated area, um, but I think everyone has to keep in mind, the money for conservation load management, and it's about one million five hundred thousand dollars a year that we spend, is in, already in our electric rates. So that's being turned around and used to provide greater efficiency, um, but it's already in your electric rate. So I, I, I'm not sure it's easy to find a savings where the actual mechanism of producing the electricity, solar or wind, is more expensive than what we receive in, in buying electricity off, off the grid, for, for non-solar or wind.
Okay, but going back to my original question, those three hundred and seven thousand could be spent on such measures, correct? The, my original question, the three hundred and seven thousand in the, um, not spent money could be used for those projects?
Oh.
In theory.
The, that, that will provide that portion of the million five or so that we spend every year on, on projects, and if it works, um, we, we, we move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgenstein, you've got about ninety seconds.
Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street, this won't be long. A quick question, begin, the beginning of the meeting, dealt with the opioid crisis and the suit. Are we gonna hear anything more? You guys went into executive session. Will the public be updated on what that was about in any way? Can we have a clue as to what was said, how we're moving forward?
It was a strategic decision that was, that involved us not taking action. So we're. I think the answer is, we're still involved in the opioid litigation, and will be for the foreseeable future.
Okay, it would be nice that if there was a statement, just to kind of follow. And then a second quick question, I wanna thank Chairman Servoni for the statement tonight. And a follow-up is that, while it was, uh, it would be broadcast and people would see it on government TV, is there any other place that that could be posted on our website, webpage, just to let the public know, uh, what this government feels about that?
I can't do it myself, that I can tell you.
Well, again, could it be put up on our government page, in some way to send that as a message to the community?
It's possible to do that. I'm not sure of the details of what you're referring to, so I'd have to know more.
It's simply to post Chairman Servoni's statement in regards to the posters that were put up in town, and in terms of, uh.
We can cert, that will be as part of this telecast, and I think Scott could reduce that to a statement and put that on the website.
That would be fine. I think it's a message worth putting out that the community would benefit from, and I think you guys would benefit from it as leaders of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item eleven, which is to conduct a public hearing to consider and act upon amendment to chapter one fifty-six, property maintenance, article one, section one fifty-six, three D of the code of town of Wallingford. Uh, before we open the public hearing, Counselor Chertelle is chairman of the ordinance committee, would you like to summarize what we are proposing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, there's two things on the agenda, and they're, they're tied. Uh, we're basically moving the, repealing the abandoned vehicles chapter, which is the, the next, not this item, but the next one, and replacing that wording with a subsection in the Blight Ordinance. This came to us in our October fifteenth ordinance committee meeting, and it came to us from the police chief and from attorney Small. Basically, the way it's written today, uh, that the ordinance in chapter two fourteen, uh, covers the violation and the authority of the town to remove abandoned vehicles, it also references a state statute. But the problem was that we don't want the citation that's referenced to be an infraction, but rather a fine under our ordinance. Uh, the goal is really to get the people, the property owner, to move the car. So in doing so, we, attorney Small looked at it and decided that, you know, the better place for this would be under the Blight Ordinance. And so that, this does not diminish the powers of the police department in any way, they still have the powder, power to remove vehicles on private property, uh, but the main purpose is to motivate the property owner to do so first. So, uh, basically, again, this, in this agenda item, we are adding a subsection to the chapter one fifty-six, property maintenance, article one, uh, the Blight Ordinance.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I'll open the public hearing, and allow comment from the public. And I think we've heard all we're gonna hear from the public, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass, uh, the, thank you from there. From there. We pass the amendment to chapter one fifty-six, property maintenance, article one, section one fifty-six dash three D of the code of the town of Wallingford.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I'm in support of the language, I just, you know, Mayor, at the meeting, um, I had brought up some issues with the police chief about, uh, Blight in town, and I just, um, wanna commend, um, the chief, within days, uh, that situation was dealt with. So, um, came up in the discussion over this item, I thought it was important to, uh, to recognize that. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Maron.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertelle.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. Next up is to have a public hearing on the repeal of chapter two fourteen, vehicles abandoned, with that language was, uh, made unnecessary by the ordinance we just adopted. Is there any comment from the public? There being none, I close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we repeal chapter two fourteen, vehicles abandoned.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, now that we just amended that chapter, and now we're gonna repeal what we amended?
No, no, no.
You amended.
We one fifty-six.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
This is two fourteen.
Okay.
We're not creating a void where we just create.
Right. Okay, that's, I just wanted to be careful of. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any other questions, comments from the council? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Maron.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chertelle.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item thirteen has been withdrawn, item fourteen, there is no business for, and therefore, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, there being none, I declare the council adjourned.